Please just make sure you state your name for the record. You can hold that microphone right there. If, is that one on? You can pull the one out of the standup. Just pull it out, it slides right out.
This one's working?
Yep, that one works better, thanks.
Okay. My name is Katie Kavalchik. I'm here with Environmental Planning and Design, and we're representing the property owner. I'm here on behalf of Carolyn Yegel, who's been the certified planner throughout this entire process. She had another commitment tonight, so I am here in her absence. I'm here to present the application for parcel A up on the screen on Shafoni Road. The application is dated for July of 2019, and it includes one parcel within the township, each of the adjacent property owners within 300 feet of the property, a list which was derived from Washington County GIS data. We contacted all of those property owners and have the receipts here for the mail, which we can provide to the township. So parcel A, again, is on, at the intersection of Shafoni Road. It's currently designated as an R2 medium-density residential district. We can show on this zoning map here. So it's the parcel up at the top here, in that blow-up. The intent of rezoning this parcel is to bring it into C3, which would be an extension of an existing C3 district, where there's already an established corridor of C3 properties along the Muse Bishop Road Village Commercial Corridor. And in the context of the existing 1998 comprehensive plan, we believe that these points within that document support this request. On page 34, it identifies that commercial uses on the main streets are appropriate, and this proposed area is on a main street within the township. Some of these might be related to the other parcel as well. Page 45 notes that there are limited opportunities for small businesses in the township outside of the R3 villages. The size, configuration, and accessibility of these 23.2 acres provide the opportunity to host conforming areas for businesses. And also on this page, it notes that "commercial and industrial development in appropriate locations which do not impact residential neighborhoods are desirable since these developments provide increased revenues without adding children to the schools." So the designation of this area as C3 supports that, the township's desire. This effort would address any non-conforming situations of these parcels, and it would be compatible with the township's planning efforts that are continuing to evolve. We recognize that there are two portions of this application, and depending upon the preference of the board, we recognize there may be one or two actions associated with any future decision. The pattern in this area of parcel A supports the extension of the C3 mixed-use corridor to the west, and in the second location, which I guess will be the second hearing tonight. So to close when reviewing this proposed pattern, we believe it's both compatible with the established development and as well as the township's evolving planning efforts. And I'd also like to note that there are no proposed development plans for any of the parcels we're discussing here tonight. It's to bring these into conformity and to stay within the pattern that already exists within the township.
Can you go back to the first picture you showed?
Does that conclude your presentation? Okay, so just for clarification, you're simply asking for the rezoning to bring it in your opinion to conforming use, not because you have a specific, specific purpose behind the rezoning?
Correct. There is no proposed development to change the use of zoning right now. It's more to bring it into compliance with the adjacent zoning, which is C3. So extending that C3 to the west would include this parcel and continue that corridor.
Seems like a lot of work just to render it conforming use, but okay. So now we'll take public comment on the application for rezoning for, so this is application 2019-019. This is specific to the Shafoni Road rezoning. If you would like to address the board, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sheldon Bogus.
You might have to use that, yeah, sorry.
My name is Sheldon, oh. Sometimes I don't really need the microphone.
We need it for the video recording system.
So my name is Sheldon Bogus. I live at 122 Markwood, so right out my back door, the hill, and this property right there. To be clear, in my opinion, if this request is approved, and the property at Shafoni and O'Hare Roads is rezoned to C3 Village Commercial District, then it will be C3 forever. To name a few of the types of businesses that are allowed: coin-operated laundry, a pharmacy, eating establishments, specialty or sporting goods stores, a funeral home, and under certain conditions, a car wash or a gas station, all in our backyards. Even if the most innocuous business goes in there tomorrow, once the property's rezoned, any of these businesses that I just mentioned could set up shop here without any public opposition. So in our opinion, rezoning this property to C3 is just flat-out inconsistent with the zoning and use of surrounding properties. The properties to the south are zoned R2, and are part of a large residential subdivision. The properties to the north and west are zoned R1, and are also residential in nature. And O'Hare Road is a natural dividing line between the C3 to the east and the residential properties to the west. So just as a point of reference, this isn't the first time this property was requested to be rezoned. In June of 93, the first request to rezone it to R3 was submitted to the township. And if I may, I'd like to read two sentences from the minutes of that meeting. Decision: Public hearing, rezoning request. A public hearing was held to request a rezoning of a parcel of land along Shafoni Road from R2 to R3. After a discussion by the board of the R3 zone, and what the original intention of this zone was, and also the additional traffic that would be imposed on this area, a motion was made to deny the request to rezone this parcel by Mr. Devis, second by Mr. Agizio, passed by the board, passed by the board by all members present, voting aye. So now, 26 years later, the traffic is so much worse with the increase in developments like Pristine Fields, Mayfair Meadows, Mission Hills, Hartwood Farms, Oakwood Estates, as well as South Point. Now, all of us in this community know that Muse Bishop Road near this intersection is windy and just flat-out dangerous. Lieutenant Cuzak of the Police Department tells me that in the last year, there've been five reportable, four non-reportable accidents that have occurred within 500 feet at the intersection. Thankfully, none of them were fatal. But you increase the volume of cars, the traffic, trucks, and I submit that this luck goes down. As recently as within the last two weeks, I understand that a vehicle hit into the home at 299 Muse Bishop Road. And now we're honestly considering allowing more, allowing any number of commercial businesses to add more traffics into the equation. During the planning commission meeting on the 19th of September, a motion was made by Mr. Cauldron to approve the request, but there was no second, the motion failed. Then there's the impact of what any business will do to the value of our homes. My friends and my neighbors to the left and right, our properties are connected to this property. And while I'm not an appraiser, I did spend some years in the mortgage services industry, and I know, I've read enough appraisals to know that when a residential property is contiguous to a business, more often than not, it is noted as a negative in the valuation of the property. I can see that this kind of decision would drop the value of our homes easily, $25,000 the moment that you vote to rezon it. So finally, let me tell you what we, my wife and I, might have to look at for as long as we're here if this request is approved. From our kitchen, from our family room, from three of our four bedrooms, and when we sit on the deck, we'll see whatever business is in there and all the activity that that brings. If this happens, there's always the possibility of all kinds of noise and lights at all hours of the day and night. Maybe tractor-trailers idling at night while we're trying to sleep, maybe the smell of trash and dumpsters outside and the rodents that it could bring, and I could go on and on. This certainly isn't anything that we envisioned in our backyard when we moved here 20 years ago. So I say that if you approve this request, all of us that are here right now, your constituents, and everyone that follows us for years to come, will have this board to thank. So I implore all of you to not let this be your legacy. Thank you.
My name is Roberta Allison, Robin's my nickname, but I also live near this property, adjacent, below our hill. It connects to the lot in question here. And I have seen our value of our home go up over the years, at least the past five years. The property of our home has been going up like 10,000, which is great, but I agree with Sheldon. I mean, once this gets put in and there's a commercial business there, it's gonna devalue our home, and that's not good for us. I mean, for one thing, the residents across the street from this property, that's residential. On the other side's residential. It does make no sense to turn this property into a commercial. Now, I'm all for business. I love business. I love the, you know, Cecil Township growing, and, but it's, it's not good for residents in this area at all. And I just hope that he finds a contractor that can come, maybe put a couple of homes, because it's a burden to him for sure. But for us, and there's more of us than one of him, so for our residents here at Cecil Township near this property is gonna be bad for us, and that's what we're concerned about, because we're all homeowners here, we're all taxpayers, and so I vote that you turn this, that you do not agree to have this turned into a commercial property. Thank you.
My name is Paul Godek, and I don't have the fortuna to live right across the street. I'm across the street from Robin and people that live next to the land. And my, my opinion is the same as theirs. I mean, this is a nice neighborhood that we lived in, that we do live in. We don't need commercial businesses in our backyards. There's a lot of little children playing in the streets in our little community, and it's nice to be able to see them do that in the safety of that little community without commerciality going right through the heart of it. Thank you. My name is Paul Godek. Did I mention that? Across the street.
My name is Mike Faulkner. I'm from Brooktree Court. I'm just as confused as you are, Chairman Fisher, as to, to the, to the hearing, the way it started out. Is it normal just for people to come to the township and ask to extend rezoning for, just because, for no reason? Is that a normal thing? Obviously, there's something that they want to put there, we wouldn't be here, and...
I wouldn't say like, normal, not normal. Generally, in the past, applicants do have a plan, but you also keep in mind that once the rezoning has changed from R2 to C3, it has permanently changed that. So even if they had come before this board with a plan and presented it to us, once it's zoned C3, it stays that way. So any of the list of the uses that somebody wrote in the beginning could be put on that property in the future.
Yeah, that's what I understand, I understand that. I've been a policeman here for probably 13, 14 years now. I patrol that area quite often. That area, that particular intersection, it's extremely dangerous. I've been down there numerous times on bad accidents, and the one gentleman's correct there was a, a car that just went through the house down there about two weeks ago, I think. For you to consider putting in some type of a business there that could 10 times, 10-fold cause a lot more traffic to come down through there, I just, I just see a nightmare, not only for the people driving, but, you know, just for us. It's a nightmare. I couldn't imagine putting a business there like that. And I agree with the other people, what it's gonna do to the value of our homes.
Thank you.
My name's David Dotty. I'm on the board, directors of Hartwood Farms Homeowners Association. And I came from County Line Road, South Fayette, and went through numerous attempts to have that area rezoned commercial. Every one of them failed. I hope this fails tonight. We feel, as a board, we have, we have 89 residents on 90 lots, and everyone invested an extreme large amount of money to build those houses and to continually improve them. Now we're considering commercialization, which goes contrary to the zoning practices for the last 16 years of that development. And although we're a little bit further away, it's gonna cause a lot of problems for the citizens of Hartwood Farms, simply because of that interchange is so dangerous. And for the school buses to maneuver and everything else through that intersection, increased traffic is not gonna, not gonna be an asset, believe me. We have a very serious problem, not only at that intersection, but also along the three-mile stretch of that road, that Cecil, Muse Bishop Road. So for these reasons, I think it's a bad idea, really bad. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Konetschny. I live at 1562 Route 980, and I've lived there since O'Hare Road was literally a red dog road. And now I drive that road to work five days a week for the last 30 years, and there have been a lot of changes along O'Hare Road. A lot of it good, and some of it scary. And the traffic along O'Hare Road has gotten so much more increased that more accidents occurred at the opposite intersection of 980 and O'Hare Road, and also at Cecil Bishop Road and O'Hare Road. The intersection as stated before me, at Cecil Bishop and O'Hare, going into Muse is less than ideal. And if this request is passed tonight, I see the next discussion as being, well, we need to change the road now. And that, of course, is another deal, thing to deal with. But I would request that you all vote no on this, on this application, because not only as the people who went before me in speaking tonight talked about the decrease in their property values, but also as the officer stated, decrease in safety at that intersection, it is just going to be a nightmare to have commercial in that area. And to state on the application that it's an extension of the business district on Shafoni Road is much more than exaggeration. Everyone in this room knows that. I think even the people who wrote the plan know that. You cannot call really what goes on, on Muse Bishop Road and Muse, a serious business district. There are some small businesses there, yes, but Shafoni Road was never intended to be a continuation of the business district, and it's not even a continuation of the road. I don't even think that road has been paved yet, has it? So let's just be real, and please deny this request, or I think there will be a lot more angry residents than there are unhappy residents. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Eric Beisweiger. I am a licensed Realtor with the State of Pennsylvania for Howard Hanna Services in Peters Township. I also live at 189 Markwood Drive. A lot of these people are making very valid arguments against this, and I agree with them. Property values are gonna go down. I've spoke to a lot of people within our company about this, but it's not even about that, it's about our families. Me, my friends, and not everyone that we've met out there, has moved out there or built a home there and stayed there for the quiet environment, for their kids, to raise them how we want to. We don't want businesses come in and affect the safety of our kids in our area, so we please ask you to not approve this. Thank you.
My name is Mike Allison. I live at 130 Markwood Drive. I'm a drywaller by trade, member of the Italian Club in Muse there, and, yeah, I'm concerned, because you can see on the map right there, there's houses, there's residents on either side of the road, and then the big part is a farm. And as a matter of fact, I'm not sure if the person that owns the farm is here tonight, but we tentatively had a meeting at her house, you know, and she was opposed to this, and I guess she might have been having trouble getting there, you know, because she was in a wheelchair or whatever, but, yeah, you can see it's residential. It really doesn't even border Muse Bishop Road or, yeah, I mean, there's like 50 yards or so, it's not even connected. So to say that that's part of the Muse Bishop Road corridor, it's, it's not, you know, and it's all residential. And as a matter of fact, I think it was one day this year, you know, you go a little further down, like you're going towards to get on 50, and you got that crossroad there where a lot of people now are going up to South Point, and they just put signs up that no truck should, coming down that road should make a left turn. Well, earlier this year, a truck, like I think it was a Levin Furniture truck, tried to make the left-hand turn, and he got stuck. And so then the road was closed, and, and like, I'm going to work, and, or I was coming home from work, and then you couldn't even get around, you know, so that's another situation like people were talking about. That road, I mean, needs to be improved, but we, we, we sort of moved out in the country because to be residential, you know, to have a little bit of a slower pace, but now you can't stop progress, and, and things are building up and stuff, you know, so, but I just don't think it's a good idea. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
My name is Rick Birdiotti. I live at 12 Shafoni Road. I live right on the corner where the three roads intersect. I've lived there for 27 years. Traffic is definitely getting worse. When my kids were in high school, in grade school, the bus wouldn't even stop on the road to pick up my kids. They had to walk down Shafoni Road to catch the, the bus. I've lost numerous garbage cans. I lost my fence. I've been almost T-boned, I couldn't tell you, numerous times, coming out of my driveway or going into my driveway, being rear-ended. With the traffic being backed up on 79, it's even worse, and I have some concerns, obviously. Number one is safety for not only myself, but anybody that lives on that road. My neighbors' cattle corner from me, if you notice, have put huge boulders in their front yard, and that's to stop the cars that usually slide through the intersection from going into his yard. About 10 years ago, it almost ran him over. He was cutting the grass with his mower, and a car went into his yard, and that's when he put the rocks up. But I'm also concerned too about property values. I was on the zoning board for many years, and in my opinion, my opinion only, I'm not on the board anymore, but that's almost like spot zoning. I understand the corridor, but that's on the other side of Muse Bishop Road into Muse, and right now, where this property is, is all surrounded by residential property. So in my opinion, I think it's a bad idea. I think you ought to be concerned about the safety and property values and your constituencies of the people here. And I have nothing against small businesses. I'm a small business owner myself, but there's a place and for everything, and that's not the place for a small business. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any comments from the board?
I live on Shafoni Road. First, I'd like to ask a question. It was stated tonight that this is supposed to be an extension of C3 zoning. Is Muse zoned C3, or is it R3?
I don't actually know.
It was, it was my impression that...
I'm sorry.
That it was R3.
Muse Bishop Road is zoned C3. Did you hear that? So he said the portion, the portion on Muse Bishop Road is C3 Village Commercial.
So that, that changed somewhere over the years, from R3 to C3?
We can get you that. We don't have that information in front of us, it's not part of the application right now, so I'm not sure, and I don't think any of the other board members are off the top of our head at this point.
I can have some information on that. I think it was Village Commercial when it was the mining town. They, they supported San Antonio's business, it was up in the village. It was never intended to extend outside of the village.
That's correct. Approximately 26 years ago, when they applied for the zoning on the same piece of property, I recall Frankie Gizziya Senior testifying at that hearing, that, and it was R3, as I recall at that time, and that that, that when zoning was created in 1965, that that R3 zoning was created specifically for the coal mining villages, which made up the rest of Cecil Township, which wasn't farmland. And that it was because they had non-conforming lot sizes and mixed residents and businesses, and it was never to be extended outside of those villages. So that's the point I wanted to make about extending it, whether it's R3 or C3. Plus the, the safety. I mean, the, 26 years ago, there was, you didn't have all the housing plans that are along O'Hare Road now, and the traffic is, is really bad, and you're taking your life in your hands pulling out no matter where. And that stop sign that was just added by the township has made things worse. Because you have limited sight distance when you go to pull out, you know, if you're already moving, you have a chance of not getting hit. But when you're pulling out from a dead stop, you know, you're, you know, if somebody's flying down the hill, you're getting hit. Not to mention whenever the road's snow-covered, you're not stopping from a dead stop, you're not getting going, going out of there. So I think that it should stay residential. The, the surrounding properties are all used residentially, and it should continue to be residential. And commercial is just, it's, it just can't support commercial zoning. That's all I have to say.
Any other questions, or I'm sorry, any other comments related to this specific application?
Can I just say something from here?
Can I just say something from here?
Actually, so, but we need it for the video. If you wouldn't mind, I'm sorry, just for the recording system. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Kathleen Kenechny again. After someone stated about it being possible spot zoning, it really made me think that yes, that would be spot zoning, and it would set a precedent for future landowners to request spot zoning, because if we allow it this time, why would we deny it in the future?
If there's no other comments, you've a comment, Ron?
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is, this black line isn't really showing what the roadway's like. If you look beside it, that's all asphalt. There's two ways out of there, which makes it even worse.
Where are you referring to, sir?
Right where it goes on to Cecil Bishop Road. If you look on both sides of it, you can see a gray area. That's all paved. Which makes it even worse. You've got cars coming in from every direction.
If there's no more comments, no more board comments, we are going to close this specific hearing related to this parcel, and then we're going to reopen another hearing for another application for the parcel off of Route 980. So this is formally closed. Now we're going to do Application 20190020. This is for parcels 1400081601, 1400081602, and 14000817. This is off of Route 980. Do you need them to be re sworn in? This is a new hearing. So if you want to stand, she's going to, if you plan to testify about this specific parcel, please stand to be sworn in for the record.
Please raise your right hand. Each of you just solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give, and this causes you the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, self, and God.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, my name is Katie Kobalchik. I'm here with Environmental Planning and Design. We're representing the property owner in regard to the three parcels that are on the screen, noted as B, C, and D, as they were initially part of the same application presentation. Parcels B, C, and D are located on Route 980. All three are currently designated as an R1 low-density residential district. The intent, in the vicinity of these parcels, B, C, and D, non-conforming businesses have emerged on R1-zoned properties along this frequently traveled corridor. This rezoning request would bring existing businesses, which currently exist on these parcels, into conformity, so that the businesses can continue functioning in conformance with its zoning designation. As of today, there are no proposed development plans for either of these three parcels, and in context of the existing comprehensive plan, we believe that the following points support this application request. Basically, the designation of this area as C-3 would support this township's desire. The setbacks and configurations of the access of these proposed lots provide sufficient areas so that any real or perceived impacts can be properly addressed. As said before, this effort would address the non-conforming situation that exists today on these current parcels, and it would be compatible with the township's planning efforts that are continuing to evolve. And to close, when reviewing the proposed pattern that this application presents, we believe it's compatible with the established development in this area, which is currently We recognize that there may be one or two actions associated with the application, as stated earlier, so we recognize that two different decisions need to be made.
Does that conclude your presentation? Okay. If anyone would like to comment on this specific parcel, or these specific parcels, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Dave Vergatti, Treasurer of the Hartwood Farms Homeowners Association. In addition to what I said before, we have specific concerns that rezoning and the commercialization of these three parcels of land along 980 will be a disruption to our residents on the south and east portions of Greenfield Drive and all the residents on Brookfield Court. The land subject to rezoning to C-3 will likely cause noise, light, and other forms of blight that are normal, which are the normal result of commercial property, especially because there is no buffer zone between our homes, which sit high on the hill, and this commercialization of this property. There's nothing to buffer the light and the noise and anything that might be as a result of commercialization. So again, we invested heavily in this residential community. Now, we're seeing that we're going to be surrounded by commercialization. I don't think it's good for the township, or it's not good for us, and it's going to cause some more problems along the 980 corridor, which requires significant improvement to be a safer area.
Hello again. Kathleen Kenechny, 1562 Route 980. I have grave concerns also about the rezoning of this property. About 20 years, I'm guestimating, I don't know how many years it was, but about 20 years, I served... Looked at the zoning for the entire township, and we put together the map for the township supervisors to reconsider. And we all agreed that we would not change the zoning of this area, even though it was non-conforming, because to do that would mean that any type of commercial could go in there. If it's non-conforming, it has to be a similar business that goes in there, nothing except what's already there. And we did not want large commercial areas there. And the fact now that they're looking at three parcels is very scary, because of the increased traffic, because of the increased light, the noise, the pollution, and I'm most concerned right now about the lighting and the traffic, because that would gravely affect me, and I think it would gravely affect every single person in this room, and I hope you comment about that. The reason why it would affect me is, right now, it is hard for me to get out of my driveway at 1562. Some of you have been there, you might have realized that when you left. And people are kind enough in the morning to let me out. They see me sitting at the end of my driveway while they're in line to go through the stop sign at O'Hara Road and 980, and after three or four of them pass, somebody always lets me out, which is very nice of them. But if we add increased traffic on Route 980, it is going to be harder for those of us who live there to not only get in and out of our driveway, but to continue living the way that we do. Right now, and I've always loved to sleep with my windows open, I can no longer do that because the screech of the truck wheels from fracking trucks and construction trucks going past my house 24/7, and screeching their brakes, they speed right up to the stop sign, screech their brakes, and then coming from the other way, they're shifting gears and moving. So with more traffic, that would only be worse. And right now, I have a patio, beautiful patio in my backyard, and I have a glass table there that I put in the summer, and every day I have to wipe that glass table down, and it is black from the air pollution developed on Route 980. So I once again request that the supervisors not approve this application, but to leave things as they are.
Mike Faulkner again. I agree 100% with everything they said. I'm not going to repeat it all again. My concern is, if you look up around C, I'm on the cul-de-sac. I purchased that particular spot for a reason. It was almost an acre lot, and I know Mrs. McElhaney's here. I believe her lot's a little bit bigger than mine. I think it's about an acre and a half, and there's reasons why we selected those two lots. As you can see, that whole section on C borders her entire property, and it borders the whole back half of my property. I'm in the same boat as them. I don't want to be waking up next year, look up my bay window in the back of my house to see all these trees come crashing down and some kind of construction going on that are more businesses taking place. My biggest fear of living there this whole time was housing development. I love the buffer that's there because of the trees. When you look at the picture, it looks bigger than what it is. It's really not that far away from 980. It's pretty close. Like I said, my fear was another housing development going up through there. Never did I dream that I'd have to be worrying about, you know, commercial or businesses building up on top of that hill as well. I agree with the couple that were up there before. Please do not approve this. I'd end up selling my house.
My name's Brad Smith. I live at 1734 Route 980. My house is on the right. It's two doors down from the lot that's designated as B. I, as with everyone else in this room, I share concerns about the decisions being made today, twofold. One is based on the fact that we're making a decision on the unknown, and we're making a decision not only on the unknown, but we're making a decision that it cannot be reverted in case we don't like the unknown. I concur with the fact that we have some spot zoning that seems to be going on this evening, the request, and also understanding that the 70-acre parcel of land, which is about two doors down from me, is currently up for sale, seems to conveniently put together a puzzle of a very large development that we do not maybe comprehend at this meeting, but it seems like it's setting it up that it could become a very large development. We have 70 acres that's for sale, and we have the 20 acres that make up the segments B, D, and C, and then we have what's going on over at Shafoni. And if we were to adjust that map, we would see that these all connect with that 70 acres. I've been in this township my whole life. I've lived in the house that I live in now for the past 10 years. I built my house in this area. I made the investment based on what I knew that I bought into, and it wasn't this. I fully embrace small business, and I think it is important for the community, but I believe it has a place. I bought into my land and I built my house based on knowing what I could see at Parcels B and D, and I welcomed those small businesses for what they were. So not only on this venue currently that we're speaking about, I also have some concerns and opposition at this time on the previous version that we spoke with at Parcelway. And that's it.
My name is Gretchen McElhaney. I'm the homeowner in the Hartwood...
Gretchen, if you wouldn't mind just holding the microphone. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you. All right. My name's Gretchen McElhaney. I'm the homeowner in the Hartwood Farms Development, and we own the residence at 100 or 1,004 Brooktree Court. I was wondering if it would be possible to switch to this map. My property is adjacent to Parcel C. And the reason I wanted to switch views on that map is just to be able to see how much Parcel C does join so many of the properties that are in the Hartwood Farms there. It's not just a wooded tree line. There are homes that do a butt to that parcel. On behalf of myself and my neighbors in the Hartwood Farm Plan and Mayfair Plan, I'm requesting that the proposed parcels, Parcel A, B, C, and D be denied rezoning, although I understand a lot of these issues have been addressed already with Parcel A. Many of those concerns have already, also are applicable to Parcel C, B, and D. With Parcel B, C, and D being relocated on, or located on 980, traffic flow and increased road use would be an issue. The township's 2019 comprehensive plan has already identified that the closest intersection of the site, that of 980 and the O'Hare Roads, is being one of the top five intersections in need of additional traffic control consideration. This is deficient, and I'm very concerned about the accidents. Rezoning either of these areas would only exacerbate these problems, not to mention the issues with the increase in traffic noise and odor, as well as some visual intrusions on peace and privacy, as well to some degree, the use and enjoyment of our properties. It is our understanding that a change to C-3 would change the minimum rear setback to 30 feet, which is very close to the edges of our property. Light, noise, and other forms of blight that are the normal result of commercial property, especially with this minimal setback, would also detract from reasonable use and enjoyment of our property. And I'd like to note that tractor-trailer noises already exist quite frequently from the properties down at Asian Automotive, quite late into the night, in the middle of the night. Very concerned that that would increase, so I encourage you strongly to deny the rezoning, please.
My name is Dawn Sahin, and I live at 1039 Greenfield Drive. And my concern is bringing more strangers into the housing development. I'm the parent that walks into the middle of the street when I see a stranger car that is normally not on our road or in our housing plan. And either side of the plan gets commercial properties, there'll be more strangers in the area, and I have a fear of human trafficking, I have a fear of kidnapping, and although it seems far-fetched, it is in our backyards already. So I would like you guys to, for the children, to not allow any commercial zoning.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lee Sahin, and I live at 1039 Greenfield Drive. So in the last picture that was up there, our property is very close to the C-line. If you're looking, we're C in the housing plant to the right. It's obviously a tough decision. I understand when a business property, I used to live in Seven Fields back in 1999 on 228, nice, beautiful housing plan, and I saw, within a few years, maybe five, 10 years, how that residential lovely area to live in became so commercialized and so oversaturated with businesses that it was almost like McKnight Road. It became that in a matter of 10, 15 years. And I guess my challenge would be, or my request to the board would be, supervisors would be not to allow commercial properties into that area. The challenge is that you guys have is that it's, when you say C-3, that's a wide host of options that's available to the purchaser of that property, and I think the system is a little bit backwards in the sense that we should first kind of know what... know what somebody wants to put in there before you're forced into a position to approve it or to deny it. And I think that's a real challenge, I think, in terms of the way things are structured, just structurally. Then, you know, you think about noise pollution. Right now, we have a lot of noise pollution from the fracking industry. At nighttime, you open your windows, you hear this grinding, and it's going on. And yeah, is it great for the community? Is it great for jobs and taxes and all that? Yes, it's good. It's good. But I think we just want supervisors that will strike a balance between what's in the best interest of their constituents, the residents of the community, and understanding that when somebody changes the zoning, it dramatically increases the value of that property immediately. That's what it does. But to the residents who own hundreds of homes in that area, the property values will go down. I don't, even as strong as the trend is in Cecil, I think when properties that are this close to a commercial facility, I think the property values will go down. And I'm just, I'm concerned about that because Cecil's a wonderful town. People make investments to live here because it's a country, fairly country rural area. And not to belabor the point, but also with A property, yeah, I know you closed that, but I just would say that that is a dangerous intersection, and it's very close to the homes that are in that neighborhood. And I think that would be a huge mistake to change the zoning on that, all for small business. I'm a small business owner. Love to expand where it makes sense, but I think with B, C, and D, if you kept it non-conforming, and you could just approve something that might make sense for everybody's best interest, I think that would be the, maybe a fair compromise.
I want to make one point for clarification. The law doesn't allow us to approve a zoning change with conditions, meaning if the applicant said, "I'm only going to put a beauty shop there." If we change the zoning to, they say, the C3, what he says doesn't mean anything. If it's a permitted use in that zone, it could be done. We can't ask him what he's actually putting in there to make a decision or base our decision on that, but also, he doesn't have to say what it is. He might not know what it is, but we couldn't do it with the condition anyway. It says, "We either change it to commercial or we don't."
I see.
And there's no in-between. We either change it, and then if we do change it, all the uses listed as permitted uses are permitted there.
Yeah. So now it's currently non-conforming? Is that true?
The two, the businesses that operate there now, the township adopted zoning in 1965 for the first time, and then that, I think it was mentioned about that, R3 came into existence in 1988, and that created that village commercial that they talked about that was really just for all the villages in the community. Because there was a lot of small businesses mixed in with the residences on, in all the villages, like Main Street and Cecil, and then youth, and then south of all the villages. So that was really specifically set up for the villages. But this here, it was, the law also says when townships adopt zoning for the first time, they have to accommodate any existing business. Now, the township, back then, I wasn't even born in, the, back then, the township could have zoned those as industrial or commercial, whatever they were using it for at the time. I think back then, early on, it started as a John Deere dealership from the beginning. And the township then could have done it as commercial. It wouldn't have been considered spot zoning if there's an existing business there. And I know spot zoning was, the word was mentioned a couple times. That is a different thing than an existing business that is non-conforming. So they're permitted to be there for, like, in perpetuity. But if, and under non-conforming, if the business wants a change, it can change, but it has to be a business of equal or less severity. It can never become anything more severe.
Okay. So with, thank you for that clarification. So with C up there, are you, C currently doesn't have a business residing on it, is my understanding. So if somebody wanted to put a business in C, would they, would that go under the guise of non-conforming?
They can't add it. No. Non-conforming is a business that was already there, and then we, the township, came in and zoned it after that business was already there.
Grandfather.
Yeah. So if there's nothing there, the only way that a business could go on parcel C would be if we agreed to change the zoning.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any board comments?
My name is Lisa Blaser. I live at 1028 Greenfield, so one of those little wedges on the curve there that backs up to C. We moved to Pennsylvania three years ago. We had lots of choices of places to live, and we chose Cecil because it's quiet, because it's beautiful, because we love it here. Our view in our backyard, it can't be beat. And when we got the letter a few weeks ago saying that this could possibly become commercial, we could not believe it. It's, I echo everything that everyone here has said tonight about the concern. Property values, safety, noise pollution, air pollution, safety of our kids, everything. Please do not ruin our backyards.
I am surprised that no one mentioned the bad curve on Route 980 very near this property. I've actually helped people out of the hay field when their car went over the hill. And there's a lot of speeding on 980. And it is very difficult to go around that corner, and with more increased traffic, we're going to ask for more people in the hay field. Just thought I would mention that as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heather Reynolds. I live at 1030 Greenfield Drive. And to kind of go along with all of my other neighbors, we have, in Green County, for over 10 years, we had 12 acres of property. We had a farmhouse. It was beautiful there because of the surroundings. We have a son that has special needs, and when it came a point in time, we were recommended to come to Cecil Township. The school district is wonderful. You'll love it here. So we moved to Cecil Township and found a beautiful property, like my neighbors have echoed. It's quiet. It's peaceful. It has everything that Green County had, but it has all the amenities that Green County didn't have. So it was the best of both worlds. We've loved living there for the last 10 years. And to, again, echo what my neighbors have said, our views are beautiful behind my back house. I can see deer. There's a pond. There's ducks. You can hear them. It's beautiful. To have that replaced by industrial sounds, noise, air pollution, would be just a real disservice to everyone. So we moved here to be in Hartwood Farms, not in Hartwood Industrial Park. So I really appreciate the ability to speak with everyone here and my neighbors, and I beg you to really reconsider doing this. Thank you.
So just as a point before I close this hearing, we will not make a, we will not render a decision tonight. This board will close this hearing this evening, and then if this board chooses to add it as an agenda item, it will be added to future board meetings, and the decision will be made at a future board public meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that mean that you can just go on ad nauseam deciding? I mean, is there not a, by this certain point, you make a decision? Should we have to now worry that this could go on for some amount of time until the board says yes or no?
There is not a current, or there is not a formal time period in which we have to make a decision, but...
Does there a legal statute that has to be met?
No. But I, I mean, I can only speak for myself. I can't imagine this would drag on for months and months and months and months and months. So, you know, as chairperson, I would imagine that within the next 60 to 90 days, it would be on the agenda for a vote of some sort. And with that, I'm going to close this hearing for this application, 20190020. Thank you.